Welcome to, well firstly apologies for the slight delay there, we'll blame some technical issues on that one. But welcome to the August edition of our monthly town hall meetings. We have some very exciting updates coming from Ryan Gill, our founder and CEO. And then also an amazing presentation on VRMs from Stu Richards himself, also known as Meta Mike. So without further ado, I'm gonna hand you over to Ryan.
Yeah, I think we can, we can just kind of roll into these more casually, kind of have a conversation. I think there's, there's a big, big updates that are coming next week that I won't get into too much detail. But the, the focus of this, and Alistair as sort of leading community, you can kind of talk about your intentions with this specific town hall. But we're really getting the technology to a point now where we're kind of feeling the limitations of certain file types. And, you know, we have joined the Metaverse Standards Forum to kind of be a part of the industry-wide effort to kind of gather everyone around the table on this, in the sense of like, how do we really achieve interoperability? Given all of the progress in the technology of how gaming has worked and understanding the goal. And there are some gaps there. And we have identified a standard out of Japan actually called the VRM standard, which is solving a lot of problems for us actively in a day-to-day context of, you know, using our own tech and, you know, getting personas and avatars wired up and rigged and moving across worlds and things like that. So that's really the purpose of, of this town hall specifically. If you're an existing investor in either entity, you got an update last month, then we'll begin to do those more consistently every month. Kind of really succinct bullet points, straight to the point. We've got a lot of press that's coming out. If you got the update, then you'll see that we've, we've sort of gotten Emergence secured now on both the Unreal Engine Marketplace and the Unity Asset Store. We are formally a Unity verified solution partner. We actually have a featured spotlight on the main front page of Unity coming up in September. And that is to sort of catch Unity up to the thirty-five thousand downloads that we have on Unreal Engine. And again, now that we have those downloads and we have usage, we have our Discord going, our product team is pretty much around the clock on tech support. Our tech support channel has developers coming in at all times. And we're really, we're in, in the maintenance mode now, you know, like we, we were in research and development. We were kind of putting the tech together, writing the code. Alicia's been doing a great job running that team. We have Chris on Unreal, we have Tom on Unity. And Agu who's kind of bridging all that together with the architecture, with wallets and with blockchains. We have secured ecosystem partnerships with Lamina One, Saga, and now the Root Network. So Emergence is integrated fully into these three blockchain ecosystems. And we will begin to do more, I think, outreach to the, the communities to drive more developers and more, you know, more support, obviously, like we need to be actively supporting the developers that are using it at this early stage. So if that's you in the channels, thank you. If you're just kind of hanging around and you've downloaded Emergence and you're kind of, you know, knocking on the hood, raise your hand, let us know. Show us what you're building, you know, we're, we're in a, a unique position as an early startup with many years. You know, that we can, we can do things that don't scale right now by giving, you know, a, a pretty amazing level of sort of support. And that's, that's what we're really focused on is working with you guys on what you're building. Even at early stages, figuring out how Emergence integrates and how it solves problems. Our, our goal for Emergence is really to save you time and money. And a lot of the feedback that we've gotten from developers so far is that, you know, some are saying six figures in six months. You know, which is, which is really hitting the target for us. We'd, we'd love for developers to have their timeline, you know, drastically shortened in order to get these things out and shipped. So, yeah.
Awesome. And yeah, just to jump in on that, something that we've been doing kind of behind the scenes and, and a reason why we haven't done a workshop in a, in a little while is that we, we took a step back, we took on some feedback from our community and kind of looked at what, what's out there and, and our strategy about how we bring these developers over to, to start using Emergence. And we will be rolling out, I think, industry-leading workshops very soon. We're working on the, the syllabus and the program behind it, but it, from what I've seen of it and what I know and what I can say, it, it really does go up above and beyond. And I'm like super, super stoked to, to roll these out along with bounties. And, and we've got some, some big news that's gonna be dropping pretty soon as well. So exciting times ahead. So without, without further ado, over to you, it's Meta Mike.
Well, yeah, in one of these directions, huh? There we go. Yeah, thank you so much, guys, and really looking forward to today's session. Obviously, a lot of exciting news coming up and now, but today we kind of want to talk about interoperable avatars and we'll dive into kind of what the current state of the ecosystem is like. Proposal for, you know, a vision for the future of this. Because we've had a couple of years now ever really since the Facebook's name changed, a matter of a lot of discussion about what this space will look like, a lot of people coming together to help define not only a vision but standardization of different formats and different ways of creating assets for use in these virtual worlds. So today we'll, we'll explore that and I'm just gonna try and ensure that everything's working and that you can see. So I think we should be all good. And yeah, just a little tiny bit of an intro of myself, I've been working with the Crucible team to kind of bring to life a lot of these VRM collections through the Emergence SDK. And for those who are joining and don't really have too much insight into what Emergence is, you know, the way I like to think about it, it is a, or part of it, especially the avatar related piece, which is what we'll be touching on today, is a layer for those who participate in Web Three to bring their assets to life in-game engines as both users and developers, where I can take my wallet, I can log in and connect my MetaMask or any other wallet and I can access my tokens in a game environment. One of those token types are avatars and a lot of, you know, the 2D PFP boom of twenty twenty-one. A lot of brands, IPs, collections, entities are starting to think about the 3D landscape because they got into this to, to create and, and engage their community in, in virtual worlds. And so we're, we're seeing a lot of these IPs think about, you know, moving from 2D to 3D and from 3D eventually into world. So as a, an owner of a wallet and having custody of NFTs that have 3D assets tied to them, how can I bring them in world? That is what Emergence enables for both developers and users. So kicking off with really what the current state of visual digital identity is. And I use that term, it's obviously a very broad term, but when I'm speaking about visual digital identity, I'm talking about how we express ourselves visually in a digital skin of sorts. How we embody ourselves in virtual environments. And currently, the way that, and I guess traditionally as well, the, the way that things have gone from this standpoint are very siloed. When you're creating an avatar in a game like Fortnite or Roblox, it is typically centralized to that platform. I cannot take my Fortnite's Fortnite avatar and easily bring it into Roblox. It also is centralized in the fact that the rails in terms of what you can do creatively, how you can express what you look like, the type of body shape that you have, the type of accessories that you wear, that is all determined by that centralized entity. The, the other thing that we want to consider is the ability for us to traverse different virtual worlds or different games or different applications with these identities. As I previously mentioned, it's, it's very restricted currently in terms of how you do that. But you also typically in these platforms to participate fully and get the full experience cannot participate anonymously. You typically need to sign up for an account, you need to hand over personally identifiable information. But if you want to operate in a way that comes from a lens of anonymity, it's basically impossible to get that full experience in many of these applications. Another thing that I'll, I'll mention is that with, with how you can present yourself, a lot of that is tied to commercial value, I would say. You know, in, in the likes of Fortnite, you know, if I was a, an independent 3D asset creator, it would be very hard for me to get my outfit as one of the featured outfits that a, a user could purchase in Fortnite or an accessory or something like that. But, you know, they do collaborate with major IPs, the likes of Star Wars. In this case, in the screenshot Dragon Ball Z. And so that currently has a very incentivized model. And again, we're talking about the current state. And the last thing, which is very important, is that there is no, there is currently no option for true custody or ownership of these assets related to our visual identity, visual digital identity. It is all something that is stored within a database linked to this PII that you have handed over. And that, that, that is very important to a lot of people because we, we want to have ownership. If a game goes away or a database goes down or something happens, a hack happens and that information gets lost, then, you know, that really was never in your control. And so that's, that's just one thing to, to kind of keep in mind of how things look currently. But if, you know, I had free range and could talk about a vision of how I and I think many others see the future of visual, visual, digital identity is that that centralized shift, that centralized control shifts to decentralized control, where I have ownership of my identity and my assets. The rails in what I can represent myself as visually, that, you know, we get rid of them. We, we live in a world without creative restrictions. Sure, maybe there are some implementable restrictions on the developer side of things, but I, I still want to be able to have the option to express myself the way I want. We also, you know, think about this ability to traverse virtual worlds flawlessly. At the moment, you cannot do that, but for a vision for the future, I would like to take the visual identity from platform A to platform B seamlessly. And finally, you know, I, I want to have self custody of these assets where I know that if something happens on a server or, you know, something disappears, I still own what I've purchased or what I have owned. So that's kind of what I'll say about how I see a vision of where things are heading in the visual digital identity space. But Ryan, Alistair, anything that you want to chime in with at this point?
No, I mean, when we, when we started Crucible, the idea was around self-sovereign identity and how sort of this sort of growing standard of tech in the backend could, could, you know, make a lot of this possible. I think as a, as a standard, that's still pretty early, it's not production ready yet. And so the form that we're doing it is with, with wallets, with Wallet Connect and these assets being kind of mutively owned in the wallet. But our intention is still to always move to that sort of self-sovereign identity where an avatar becomes a sort of sovereign entity online, a digital version of yourself or something that you've created.
I think from my side, just to kind of chime in a little bit here is like something that really excites me about this is like your, your bullet point here about without creative restrictions. You know, like we're, we're not restricted by, by gravity, we're not restricted by, you know, wearing a flaming jacket is gonna burn your hair off in the metaverse. And, you know, we can really be this, this true identity of like how we want to purport ourselves without the restrictions of four limbs, two eyes and nose and a mouth kind of thing. So, yeah, I'm, I'm really excited to see how, how creative people get with this.
Yeah, the, the, all really good points and I, I, I think that that's one of the things that hasn't been considered in a lot of avatar generation platforms that maybe are somewhat interoperable at this point in time, you know. There, there are still a lot of these restrictions in place. Oops, okay, cool. So let's talk for a little bit about these keywords, standardization and interoperability. When we are referring to standardization, we are referring to, in this case, assets or avatars or components of avatars having a standard approach that can be followed by anyone who wants to participate. So that when assets get generated for digital visual identity, there is a process, there is an understanding of how it should look, how it should be structured. On the interoperability side of things, we're talking about the portability of these assets between different environments. And these two things are key because at this point in time, prior to realizing this vision for the future, there is minimal standardization and minimal interoperability and a lot more centralized standards and centralized usage ability. So we want to get to the approach where we have, we know how to develop assets so that they can be used anywhere. That is the angle. It will take a while to get there. But, you know, when we're talking about these 3D assets, not all avatars are the same. And there's a couple of components to this. One of, you know, the, the key things that we can talk about is what you see here, and that is different skeletons. And skeletons can kind of be think, thought of as the anatomy of a, a VRM or part of the anatomy of a, of a avatar. They kind of control how the avatar moves, the different joints, the different points, different bone structures. Not all of these are the same. You know, your Ready Player Me skeleton may look completely different from the Unity-based skeleton. Maybe looks different from a Roblox skeleton. So because these all have different naming conventions, bone structures, this, that and the other, it makes it very difficult to create this type of interoperability. And ideally, we want something that is standardized so that we know how many bones there are. We know the naming conventions of those bones. We know where they're supposed to sit in relation to a body or a humanoid avatar. There's also things like facial blend shapes, so the way that an eyes and mouth moves. There's also, you know, the, the, the mesh and the actual 3D asset and how complex it is because one avatar may be low poly where something like a meta-human may be very high poly and have millions of triangles. So we need to kind of think about what, how, how we can standardize this to create this, this interoperability. So in comes to play the VRM standard. And it is a humanoid avatar standard based on GLTF two point O. And for those that aren't familiar, to put a very high level, GLTF is kind of like the, the 3D format of the internet in the same way that a JPEG is an image format for the internet. The idea of the VRM is to standardize the creation of this avatar 3D asset. And what, when we're talking about standardization, we're talking about standardizing the bone structure of the skeleton and the blend shapes of how, how the face moves. There are other components as well, such as materials and shaders, we won't get too much into that. But also metadata associated with this so that we know where this has come from, who the author was, what version it was, what it can be used for. So by creating this, we are allowing developers, not just people using these avatars, but developers to incorporate a system where users can bring their assets and know that they are going to work in a certain platform that the developer is creating. So what does a standardization look like in terms of these blend shapes and the bone hierarchy? This, this is kind of how it looks. We don't need to go too far into it, but we have different emotions that you see as the green dots that have different blend shapes associated with them. And we have the naming conventions of the bone hierarchy. So this is just a high level overview of what these two set of standards look like as far as naming conventions go. But what do they actually look like? Well, here's just some examples. Given that any 3D avatar, sorry, any 3D humanoid model, whether that's a FBX or a GLB or an OBJ, any of them can be converted into a VRM. Because all, all it's doing is kind of matching those meshes to the standards that the VRM has. So it means that you can have a voxelized avatar, means that you can have a humanoid, a human realistic avatar. You can have, you know, your sand game characters. A lot of the VRM content that is out there is primarily focused around anime characters or avatars. And with this, you can have toon shaded to make them look more cartoony. So really, the, there, it is very unrestricted as to how these avatars can look. And that's very important because I think that a, a lot of people who have maybe heard of the VRM standard immediately associated with, with anime, with something that may be a bit foreign to them and what their concept of an avatar they would want to use is. I, I know at least in the semi-professional environment, that the world of LinkedIn, people really like their Ready Player Me avatars. They too can easily be VRMs because all it is doing is just adjusting the bone, bone structure and the blend shapes to match the standards. So I just wanted to clear up any misconceptions of what a VRM might look like. But what can we do with a VRM? There is, there are so many different applications at the moment for these, these avatars that really whatever you can think of, you can probably do with your VRM. So just a couple of use cases that I have listed here, V-tubing, obviously becoming very popular for streamers. You can use the VRM file in, the VRM avatar in any, in, in a multitude of different V-tubing applications. Because it has the standardization of that blend shape, you can use different cameras to control the facial movement. So you'll see up the top right, I am using Pending Realities Bunshin to do V-tubing work for content creation. And all I'm doing there is connecting my VRM to that platform and off I go in Unreal Engine Five, creating some really nice visuals. In the top left, we've got this podcast that I was doing that allowed me to, in my web browser, in my Oculus headset or MetaQuest headset, actually control my VRM avatar in a WebXR world. We can do mocap with our VRM by simply connecting it to an application. We can obviously be in multiplayer social virtual worlds. In the bottom left corner, you'll see me kayaking. That was in VR in a, a fully immersive kayak experience. In the middle bottom, this is an AR application with my VRM. So what I'm really showing here is how extensible this format is and how many people are developing with this format in mind. And now obviously mentioning gaming, but game engines, you know, you can obviously bring your VRM in there, same with animation software. So, you know, we've, we've talked about VRMs, we've talked about avatars, but we haven't talked much about Web Three yet. So let's talk about that for a second. On the right, you will see that I have titled this concept, Spectrum of Immersive Preparedness. Now bear with me while I try, try to explain this. In Web Three, especially as it pertains to people and creators building IP, there has been a strong initial launch into the world focused around 2D images and 2D images being tied to NFTs and having that being the real asset that people share, that people create content around. And, and that's kind of been the staple of things. But many people, many of these companies, IPs, collections that got into this space wanted to be here because of this Metaverse concept. And so we are now seeing that this 2D image is a great starting point, but there is a spectrum. As you move across this spectrum, you may want to develop out your assets to become 3D models. And if you want to take it even further, those 3D models then may be converted into avatars. And in, you know, the case that we're talking about here for interoperability and standardization sake, VRM avatars. So we, you know, that there, there was this burgeoning interest in being in this space and creating these IPs, creating these assets to eventually get to a space of a, an open Metaverse. But people are each taking their own time in getting ready for that. So as it pertains to how we can get these 3D assets linked to these NFTs that may be 2D images currently, well, obviously firstly, you need to develop out the 3D assets. But once you have them developed, you can use metadata of an NFT to store information. So, you know, the obviously obvious first step was the image related to that. That is typically stored in somewhere like IPFS or RWEV. But, you know, if, if we're thinking about these different 3D assets, you may want to store a GLB in, in a GLB file linked to a VRM's metadata. You may want to store a VRM associated with that. And so the way that you can do that is by creating additional metadata parameters to link out to where this content is stored. This is a lot of the times done on external centralized databases that may need some form of authentication to access, authentication to access. But it can also be stored directly on the services that I talked about earlier, IPFS and RWEV as well as others. So that a, a platform, a, a game developer can understand where this asset is stored and bring it into an experience in runtime. And really, that's, that's, that's where we're headed with all of this, where this information can be stored and used seamlessly across these experiences. And so when you have a, a VRM with an NFT that has a 3D model associated with it, a VRM model associated with it, that VRM is tied to metadata for that NFT, we can then implement technologies that are able to read that information in real time based on wallet-related data to bring these assets to an experience. And that's really what Emergence is doing as far as avatars go for Unreal and for Unity. I have this NFT that you can see in the OpenSea screenshot. And I, because I have that in my wallet and I can connect my wallet to Emergence, I can immediately bring that into Unreal Engine and Unity once I've connected my wallet. once I've connected my wallet. And we start to create the very, very, very early stages of how these NFTs can be brought to life in game engines. Because game developers, I'm gonna steal something from, you know, Ryan here, game developers are going to be uh a lot of the people who are developing out these this open metaverse experience that we that we are pushing toward. Other platforms worthwhile mentioning that are doing similar things for Weber, Hyperfy and OnSaber. So now you know, you you see that it's not just one platform or one set of game engines. We can now do this on web too. I can portably move my NFT from my self-custodial wallet around these different virtual worlds and have it be my visual digital identity seamlessly. Uh, we are getting closer to that world of being able to get rid of um uh centralized control. Uh, and I I'm sorry, I think I may have made a typo here, but we are moving closer towards this future vision of what we want this open metaverse to look like based on the technology that we're implementing now. So I know that was a massive rant and I definitely want time for for commentary, so I'm gonna end it there and uh let let anyone else chime in.
Yeah, I think the the key is, you know, for for game developers, you're probably much more familiar with with uh FBXs, which is, I believe Autodesk. And I you gotta remember, all these standards come from companies. Some of them have opened them up, some of them keep them closed. Uh, that decision poses challenges whether it's actually available for everybody um in an open context for the metaverse. There are also standards that aren't necessarily closed, but aren't standard. They're not standard in their skeleton, so it might work for a game that's using that in the game that the video game that they've built or the world that they've built, but then being able to kind of like move across worlds, then that does, that does not work. So with um FBX in particular, if you're, if you're used to Fortnite, these games, these are FBXs, it goes all the way up to like a a meta-human, which is, you know, i- an extreme level of photorealism, which is is quite actually shocking aesthetically, and and it's what some people are kind of really aspiring to. Um. That standard will likely never work, you know, for this entire new phase of the metaverse that we're all talking about. And so, um. That's the trick. That's the tricky part, right? It's like game developers are used to a, it's actually quite standard. I would say FBXs are pretty standard in game development, but they're not going to work for the next phase of all of this. So um, I think we're still very much in the in the stages of trying to figure that out. There are options like VRMs, but just having the technology uh solution alone isn't isn't really, isn't really the full solution, right? I would say for a lot of this, the technical solution is actually not the hardest one. Um, but for us, one, we're, we're supporting this sort of like broad stroke of the entire industry trying to find standards together. But two, we're actually time boxing like, you know, the next year, the next six months to really use the VRM standard and 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 show things in in reality, like show what's possible because like the whole world needs to kind of see what's possible, at least a little bit, just scratch the surface of it, and then they can kind of extend their imagination into doing doing more. And we've seen that with AI now and the rapid experimentation that takes place with AI, which is why it's so exponentially. Um, it's growing so exponentially quickly in the past year or so. Um, we're hoping to to start to kind of massage a lot of the the hurdles and the setbacks and the things that have bottlenecked this in-game development to get to that rapid experimentation. And if the VRM is what can achieve that, then, you know, that's, that's kind of what we're that's what we're hoping for. And that's why Emergence is built really function to specifically to VRMs and to show that for the player, a VRM and an FBX aren't aren't actually all that different. Because the player doesn't really care so much, you know?
Exactly. And I I think to your point about, you know, I think there is limited visibility at an industry level in examples like this where there are true use cases of being able to take a visual digital identity across different places, even if it was, you know, shown based off a login tied into an email. I just don't think people have seen what is possible yet. And I think as soon as, you know, they do see that and and see how that can be implemented and see that that there are people, you know, there are different communities um within these different platforms and different communities and Discord that that are very much focused on creating this type of content to show people what is possible. So once, you know, that that really captures the attention um of the public circle and people start talking about it, I think there'll be a lot more of a push to either extend VRM or to figure out a way to do something different. I don't think there's necessarily a need to immediately do something different. Um, I I think more minds focusing on one thing versus again siloing off into different approaches is the approach we should be taking. But even just getting people speaking about it, seeing what is possible will kind of ignite that fire that I think, you know, the industry will need to to really uh bring this to life even further.
Yeah, and I mean, it just interacting with you know, o- over the years, interacting with the Game of Thrones that is big tech, you know, the people that are sitting at 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 the at the helm of these and some some are very supportive towards this open metaverse vision. I'll name our partners like Epic and Nvidia and and those companies are a big part of the push here, even though they are sort of incumbents as well. Um, but based off of the feedback I've gotten from everybody, the solution will exist in a GLTF evolution. Right? And I think most view VRM, they're actually not so familiar with it as you might think, but they view it as like a thin layer on GLTF, right? And the uh the long-term solution to them is sort of like building onto GLTF for it to be as good as FBX or have all of the sort of like best parts of FBX because at a very high level of production, the FBX has a lot of great things. It's, it's working extremely well in the silo. It just doesn't work outside of that when when the walls are knocked down. So, um. So yeah, I I think because VRM is GLTF two point O, maybe it's a half measure of where we need to be, but right now it's at least something that that we can get, you know, we can actually get things done with, you know, and um. And I also think that because, you know, we are a Web three native company, we all know that in the next year or two, there's another big wave of enthusiasm again. And I believe that the core part of of that happening will be more into narrative. And the way that video games work and why they're so successful is because a lot of the times it is embodied narrative, it is interactive narratives, whereas film and television and all these other things are more passive. Right? You're sort of just sitting back and watching something that was written. Um. And NFTs have not been designed for narrative. They've promised narrative, they've sort of, they've sort of given a glimpse of oh, I see these characters can be a part of a narrative that I I exist in. But almost none of them have been very successful at that. Um. One in mind, MV three was actually designed specifically for narrative, and I think that they just deployed in the wrong time and the wrong market and they couldn't, they couldn't get through this bear market, but I think what we're gonna see next is the way, I guess, NFTs re are reinvented for narrative specifically and and how 3D avatars are giving you the the opportunity to embody that narrative and that and those characters. And so, um. I think VRM is a huge way of bridging the gap there and and really kind of bringing this in an authentic way into the game engine for game developers to build. Yes, they might be used to FBXs more, but I think as more and more examples show what yeah, what a VRM can achieve, um, that hopefully, you know, the goal that I'll put out there is that we do start to see this kind of rapid experimentation happening, you know?
Yeah, and I think, you know, uh, we we obviously talked about game developers as being, you know, people creating these experiences. Um, but I I also think if we can extend it to 3D as a whole, especially when immersive technologies that are built on top of Unity and Unreal, you know, when Division Pro comes out and if if that does cause a wave in terms of adoption, um, that that will be a really good point for there to be a catalyst for adoption. Um, and also like, uh, there's, there's a lot of different uh applications out there, you know, Hyper is a great example of a of VTuber content creation, where all of these VTubers are, you know, pushing out content in the same way that people were doing on TikTok, um, but all of it based off VRM. So it it may not just come from the game game developers, but also from people building 3D immersive experiences in Unreal uh and Unity. And and
Yeah, a- and I think that is a good, important um clarification because in saying the metaverse is the internet built by game developers, it's actually, it's, it's the metaverse built by those who have the skill of game development. Which is i- it's, it's a subtle difference, but it's a big one. Because I think the industry of video games and the and the expertise of game development is in an innovator's dilemma where they're so boxed into what they know. And then they have innovated in great ways with free-to-play and these other things that have arguably made gaming bigger than everything else. But, um. I think it's more about people learning game development or taking their skill of game development into into something new and the way to build, um, than saying like all game developers will do this because I I think we're seeing that there's a quite a lot of resistance from that, but there's an entire world of people who we use the internet to to learn these skills, you know, and that still is game development. It's using the same framework of technology, using the same principles. Um, but doing it more akin to what web developers and mobile developers did when they were building the internet.
Just to uh, just to jump in, um. Yeah, I I completely agree with with uh with what you're saying there and that, um. You know, building the metaverse from a, from a games perspective as well is is gonna be huge, like, let's make these, these environments fun to play, like, not just because it's Web three, it's you, you're gonna have fun there. Like, let's, let's flip that on its head. Let's, let's build fun stuff. Um, and then incorporate the the good parts of Web three. Um, but yeah, we've, we've got, uh, we've got some questions here. So um, first one, are there any downsides to VRMs?
Um, probably fair to say there's downsides to everything.
I would say that, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I I I'm kind of curious i- if there was a particular um aspects, I I you know, I I would say that from a standardization standpoint, because maybe not the standard is new, but the a- adoption of it, especially from a Western culture standard thing standpoint, there hasn't been too much development in terms of the extensibility of what can be done as as layers on top of that standard at this point in time. Um. As someone who is wanting to equip a digital avatar in a 3D world, be it on web or, you know, game engines or wherever, I personally haven't had any thing where I'm like, jeez, I wish the VRM standard had this. And and that's to put for standard usage. Um, I I would say that there, there's a lot of nuances with that. Um, but to answer your question, there are most likely restrictions and downsides if you're wanting to extend past a certain point of basic avatar interaction. Um, but I I have not really come up against any walls to this point, um, that I I that have really caused issues for for me.
Yeah, I I would say the upside is the high, it's the la- larger surface area of what you can do with it, and the downside is probably the lack of familiarity enough to have like really tested the waters to know what the downside is. I uh on the technology level, it's software. So yes, you're gonna run into things and bugs and you always do. Um. If you're already a developer, you should, you should be pretty familiar with that process. Um, outside of the technology, definitely from an industry perspective, there's a lack of education and there's probably some level of not taking it as seriously as um FBX or GLTF, even though it kind of is a GLTF. But you'll, you'll find that like people are not familiar with a VRM. And so, you know, when dealing with teams that are building games and having avatars and stuff, it's it's uh, it could be seen as like, oh, now I have to start all over again. Um. So the downside is just getting familiar with it enough to feel comfortable wi- with it in the development environment, you know? Um, but I think that should happen quite quickly when you realize it's it's GLTF, you know?
Right, exactly. And I think, you know, I'm reading some of the Twitch comments, but yes, I think documentation is very limited at the moment. I think i- it's kind of a grassroots effort of people involved in using or building with VRM as a baseline that that are putting their time and effort developing that out now. Jin has done an incredible job in in doing that, um, as well as others in the F three community. Uh, I've been doing my best to note wherever I can, different applications for it, you know, different ways of converting different file formats to to VRM. So yes, as a uh externally from the standards, it's the standard itself, I think visibility, documentation, education, that's, that's very much lacking. Um, and it would be great if we could have more conversations about it. Um, because, you know, just nine times out of ten people I speak with, they have no idea what VRM is, you know, even people that are building in these engines that are dealing with avatars, they 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 don't know. So, um, we definitely wanna help people know and become aware.
And again, that's the divide of the eastern and western world. This is a Japanese standard that actually has quite a lot of traction in Japan. Um. You know, the the Observation Board is like Nintendo and Unity and the big sort of Kiritsu companies out there in Japan, but that doesn't always cross over to the English-speaking world, but it it seems to have in Web three caught uh some small momentum, you know, like you mentioned GN M three uh Polygonal Mind and what they're doing now with Vape and uh the NFT world, at least the smartest ones who are paying attention are 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 moving into VRM. Um, and this conversation is not it's not rare to 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 come across. Uh, it just is more rare in the world of technology and game development, which which is surprising, I think. Um, and it's just a matter of time. So you could reframe that downside as a, as a blue ocean. I I would look at this as a massive blue ocean right now.
I like, right?
Hundred percent. Um, next question we have, uh, it's a, it's a bit double-barreled, actually. Um, any plans for AI integration into Emergence?
Do you want to shout out who's asking the questions?
Uh, yeah, uh, Isakai um asks, any plans for AI integration into Emergence? Alicia has answered um with yes for Unity, um, but do we have any for Unreal Engine?
Um, so AI is a part of everything moving forward, right? Um, and I I hold a different opinion. I think a lot of people are rolling their eyes about how fuzzy it is and how hyped it is. I think AI is drastically underhyped right now, even at the level that you hear it. Um, it's different. Uh, this time it is actually different and AI will be a part of everything moving forward. So Emergence will integrate with all of the features of AI in both engines. There are some early stuff that we're getting access to on Unity. Um. Unreal has been using AI AI in the stack for a long time, but not really launched it in a productized way. So you know, we're, we're at the front of the line, front of the queue with these things, and when they're available, we we will be integrating them. Uh, we have also partnered with Nvidia um to get access to Picasso and the Ace engine with Omniverse and the things that they're doing. Uh, as as it relates to Crucible or Emergence or OpenMeta doing anything with AI, uh, we will lead that with Nvidia. Um, and we're actually, we're developing a prototype for a product that would be sort of an AI-type product to 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 feed into Emergence. Um. We're very much still in validation for that, so it's not something I'm gonna talk about too much, but but yes, we have our eye on the ball there.
Awesome. Just to uh jump in on the AI thing, I saw uh Meta Mike here giving one of his uh his peers some some GIF on Twitter for using AI to write tweets earlier, which uh tickled me.
And I can, I can see him a model.
I will, I I will speak a little bit on I will, I I will speak a little bit on the philosophy of AI here with Crucible is that it's it's important to have systems rather than tools. I think everybody has the tools. And likely when one tool is available or one capability is available, it's available to everybody at the same time. There might be some like price walling here and there, like you have to pay for the API or you get early access with your relationships, but generally, once technical capability is possible now, it will be available to everybody very quickly. So it is not a competitive advantage, it is not a moat anymore. But the system in which you've designed to incorporate those tools is very much still what you have created and what you allow people to use. So for us, we're very focused on kind of this infrastructure layer of being a system that will very much incorporate AI, but for example, two D to three D generation being done really well. Once it's available, everybody has it. You know, so that that in itself isn't going to be, I know there's this sort of like paradigm of the when that, when the company does that, right, they're gonna be the biggest company on the planet, and it's easy to think that, but um, it's really about what are you in court, like now that you have that capability, what useful thing are you doing with it? Right? Now you can generate a three D model from a two D image, but what are those three D models doing? You know, and that's kind of where our mind is, it's it's a little couple steps ahead. To try to live in a world where, yes, like you tell the machine to do something and it does it, you're manifesting this instantly. Um, now what? Now what what's useful about that?
Awesome. Um, so the second part of Isakai's uh question was any plan for a web SDK? Or would there be any unique advantage to integrating Emergence for a non-Unity or Unreal team?
Web is important. Um, the game developers are on the engine, so that's where we started. You know, you have, you have to, uh, maybe ten million independent developers across both Unreal and Unity. Um, when AR really blooms, that will grow very quickly because the engines are where these things are built as well. But for accessibility and distribution, whether it's far better. Right? Like to do to build things in the engine, you're left with limited options. You get clients. You can get some web things, like there are, there are engine experiences over the web with pixel streaming, which is very expensive. There is like cloud stuff, cloud distribution for stores, um, web, Web XR is still very important and and will be sort of our third priority. Probably before mobile, I would say.
So I'm trying to keep up with the questions as well as the conversa- conversation. Um. So in the interest of time, we're we're gonna skip a couple that have already been answered in the in the chat. Um, any thoughts on offering a platform to help popular PFPs move to VRM to enable their use and attract their followings to games using Emergence?
Um, yeah, so the first step of that is we've we've built an indexer that allows you to search those things. So, um, very soon I won't give a time because uh we're not there yet, but but very soon you'll you'll have the capability to kind of search blockchain for a specific uh query or a specific tag. So for example, which collections have VRMs attached to the to the metadata? We've already built it and we're running it, we're doing tests ourselves and it's working incredibly well. Um, so I'm very happy about that. That is gonna sort of embed the future of how we can do that. Um, we've all, we're we're also very close with the company that Meta Mike is uh also working with uh that has created sort of a a platform marketplace for the conversion of collections into VRM. So whether we partner with them, whether we kind of use our indexer to support everyone doing that, um, definitely the next step is being able to identify the collections that are designed the best for the metaverse and helping helping them convert into the RM.
Yeah, and it kind of goes back to that uh spectrum of immersive pairedness, um, where, you know, it it will be it depends on where you are or where a collection is. Um, you know, if it's just two D assets that you have, the cartoons, that's going to take a lot higher lift to get it into three D. At the moment, the technology is not there for automatic conversion from two D to three D. Sure, we're getting to some places, but that's to, you know, further along, but you've also gotta think about the fact that most of these are two D PFPs that are cut off here, uh, we have no idea what the lower body looks like, we have no idea of shapes and proportions, um, you know, maybe that can be generated based off prediction, but uh it in terms of automating two D to three D, that's the biggest lift. Once you have three D TPOS humanoid armatures, uh humanoid uh avatars, like that becomes a different conversation, that's more of a structure thing and ensuring that we're converting to the standards. Um, but yeah, it 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 just comes back to where a an IP owner is in in this in that spectrum.
And the truth is NFTs were a slot machine of randomized ten to fifteen thousand traits that were all completely random and and they don't really work uh to to necessarily like create a world, a narrative, a game that you play, there's no character that makes sense unless you like have identified really with whatever aesthetic combination that you have and you love this one and you wanna play that as an avatar, but most of these NFT collections were not properly designed uh to take that next step. And can they take the lore and do that? Absolutely. But that's not the priority heuristic of designing uh PFP collection of ten thousand random things was not really anything other than just speculation and collection and rarity. Um, so there's gonna, there's gonna be a new way, a new sensibility of how to do NFT collections that really become avatars, that become something that you engage with further. Um. Actually, wh- what do you think the ratio will be to existing collections transitioning versus brand new ones?
Uh, it's a fantastic question. I I think, um. I think you probably see more uh new ones starting off as three D, um. But i- it's tough to say, like, I've tried to make predictions in this market and they have not worked out well. I thought we would have been a bit further along in terms of where VRM is at at this point. Um, but yeah, I I I just because the initial two D assets weren't designed with three D in mind, it's not only complex from a conversion standpoint, but it's also complex from like a community perception standpoint. If you convert a whole collection and drop it and people like, what is this? This is not what I wanted, then that can be very detrimental to the community and to the IPs. So, uh, yeah. Who knows, but um probably, uh, especially as different tools for generation of three Ds come to to life, you know, there's uh, shout out Boombox has creating boom tools that helps developers, um, build out these large scale projects, um, into three D. Uh, as soon as those tools become more seen and accessible, um, then I I think we'll have a lot more people starting off with three D.
Yeah, I think, um, Board Ape Yacht Club already kind of started the trend of existing collections, moving into like creating a game, like when Board Ape first came out, it was like you can have this ape and you can write on this digital toilet wall, basically. Um, and then they built a game around that. We've seen numerous collections kind of start out as a PFP and you know, if we're, if we're being brutally honest here, it was as a way of fundraising to then actively build a game. Um, and I think the the future kind of meta around this is gonna be, all right, here's our in-game assets. You can randomly have one of these like ten thousand or however, wh- whatever number, um, of these like super characters, but there'll also be a a free to play version, but you'll get far less rewards in in terms of that. Because you cannot build a sustainable game based on ten thousand players. Um, so that's gonna have to be that kind of mindset of actually, instead of making these uh PFPs and then going okay, now what? Let's make a game. I think it's gonna be, let's make a game. Um, or at least like design, have it mapped out and then um, sell your top ten thousand characters within that game and then build that and those characters into it as well as a free to play version at the same time.
Yeah, and no matter what the, no matter what the media is, you have to engage people, right? And and I mean, like Fortnite and some of these things are not really like character or lore driven, they're they're more about a mechanic of Battle Royale with a specific avatar that you like. But for the most part, like whether it's video games or film or television or anything, it's storytelling, right? And and storytelling is told through core characters, through one protagonist and supporting and like not ten thousand random things, you know, so I think these collections need to start to transition into that structure of of core characters, core core story and arc that is being like experienced and engaged through, if they will, if they want to engage people, you know, in in a in a sustained way where there's something that they're gonna come back to. Um, so yes, like a existing blue chip collection of random things could pull those core characters out and and create that structure, but but they would have to do that. That's an extra step. You can't just like throw these randomized characters into something and hope people get engaged by it because I think people see through and saying like, well, this was just a a a supply of things that were rare and not rare, so I could, they could be speculated on. And there's really no story here, there's nothing to engage further into.
Yeah, I'll just say one last thing, knowing that we're up on time, uh, i- is that going from two D to three D for IPs, whether it's you know, the NFT collection or whether it's brand, because this is something brands should be thinking about as well. Um, it gives immediate uh increase in awareness, like if you see something that you like and you're like, what's what are you equipped with? Like that gives you awareness to all the other players in the uh the space that may be interested in what you're doing. Um, and that's something that I think VRM, rather than the games themselves, but VRMs enables that discoverability, that increase in awareness, um, based off the um, the three D assets themselves. So, yeah.
Awesome. Well, we we've got a couple of outstanding questions. Um, so I think if your question hasn't been answered yet, jump into our Discord, that is discord dot GG forward slash open meta. Pop your question in in there and we'll we'll be able to answer it for you. Um.
We can do one more.
Okay, let's do one more. Is there a resolution cap to VRMs? Like, could they be used to, could they fit into a triple A game environment?
I'm sorry, are you able to repeat the question? I thought I saw it and was reading and then I was reading the wrong thing.
Is there a resolution cap to VRMs? Like, could they fit into a triple A game environment?
I mean, yeah, um, the there there is, the cap is based on the platform on way where you're handling it. Like I have I displayed there a artifact Clonex uh NFT and I have uh like three or four different level of detail VRMs for. So if I'm in web, this whole other conversation, but if I'm in web and want something more low poly that I know is going to be uh to work really well. Um, not just myself, but for others, I'll take that low poly VRM. Um, and then if if something more triple A like Bunshin, I have like a couple of hundred meg, but um VRM, the pending reality put together for me. So it 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 really just depends on what platform you're using it. Um, you know, the reason I said it's a whole nother conversation is because I think there's room for extensibility of metadata to enable that where if you are in web or platform despite that, you know, this is a web environment, then it automatically loads the low poly one rather than the high poly one. Uh, again, another conversation, but uh, yes, to answer your question, you can definitely import VRMs into, um, uh, triple A type experiences.
Awesome. Thank you. Well, let's let's wrap up here. A final closing comment is save pretty much this time and date next week, um, in your calendars. So that is, uh, seven PM CST, which is two PM, one PM Eastern Standard Time. Um, we'll come back to that. Um, but this time next week, save that in your calendars. Um, we are going to be doing a very, very exciting Twitter Spaces, so stay tuned on our social media. That is twitter dot com forward slash open meta Dow. Um. In our Discord, discord dot GG forward slash open meta, um, to to be up to date with all the latest information. Um, I mean, from from my perspective, this has been one of my favorite town halls that we've ever done and that I've ever been a part been a part of. Uh, Meta Mike, fantastic presentation. Ryan, love your insights as always. Thank you so much for tuning in.
This was a really good chat, guys. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Cheers, everyone. Good night.
Yes.